Okay, I'm calling the meeting to order for the June 16th, 2020 Marin Municipal Water District. As a first in order here, I need a motion to adopt the agenda. There's been, we're amending the agenda to remove item number two from the consent calendar, from the agenda altogether. And with that amendment, can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? I guess we need a roll call?
Yes, so you can go ahead and do a roll call. Thank you. Director Bragman?
Aye.
Director Kohler?
Aye.
Director Quintero?
Aye.
Director Russell?
Aye.
President Gibson?
Aye.
President Gibson, if I could jump in for just a moment?
Yes.
I wanted to remind the public, as noted on the agenda, that for public comments, members of the public can click the raise hand feature on Zoom, which is in the bottom of the Zoom screen, or for any of those joining by phone can press star nine, and those comments would be taken as they come in for agenda items. The public could also send in an email as described on the agenda that would be sent to board members and posted on our website. So three ways for public participation tonight.
Just a point of clarification on that. If someone from the public wants to raise their hand, they have to go to the bottom of the screen, click on participants, and then they'll see a list which will then have the control raise, raise hand at the bottom.
Got it. Thank you.
All right. Do we have any public expression?
So, so we do have one public comment that was sent to the board in advance, and it's going to be posted on the website.
Okay.
Other than that, there is no additional public expression.
All right, good. Hearing no public expression, we'll go to directors and general managers announcements. Any of the directors have any announcements they'd like to make?
None from me.
None from me.
None from me.
All right. Ben, any announcements you'd like to make?
I don't have any this evening.
Okay. That takes us to the consent calendar. Items one, three, and four. Can I get a motion to approve the amended consent calendar?
With approval.
Second. I just had a brief question, Ben, on your report about the wetland mitigation bank credit you mentioned for the Ross Reservoir.
Yes.
Can you explain what that is and why it was, was done?
I'd like to turn the answer over to Mike, who was actively in seeing that through. Mike, would you be able to respond?
Yes, Director Bragman. So what we did, you may recall when we presented this project, when we awarded it to WR Ford a few months ago, the, there's a small jurisdictional wetland that's in the middle of the slide that will get removed as part of the project. And in order to mitigate that, we purchased the credit from Burdell up in Nevada, which was approved by the regional board. So they actually, last week, they gave us our 404 certification permit. So that's what that was.
So it was an off, it was an offset for?
Yes.
Yeah. Thanks a lot.
All right. I think that takes us to item number five. And Paul, for our monthly water supply report?
Point of order. Did we approve? I think we still need to approve.
Yeah, and we need a roll call.
Yeah, we're gonna do a roll call if that's okay.
Okay, right.
The Director Bragman?
Aye.
Director Kohler?
Aye.
Director Quintero?
Aye.
Director Russell?
Aye.
President Gibson?
Aye.
Okay, thank you for that. Now we're on number five, monthly water supply report.
Okay. Good evening. Paul Selye, Operations Director, and yes, the monthly water supply report for May. We're going to review production and storage, take a look at some of our storage projections, and then, you know, go through very briefly our water supply strategy. And our first slide is just a snapshot of our reservoirs as of May 31st. And I would just draw your attention to the bottom number here. We're about 95% of normal for this date, with 66,466 acre feet in total storage. Our monthly production report here, our total production in the top table, so that's all of our sources, including Sonoma County water. At this point, we're at 24,066 acre feet, and that's about nine and a half percent up from last year. As we look to the bottom of the table, the bottom table, excuse me, imported water, you can see that we're ahead in total where we were last year. And we've actually started to increase our take, and we're on target to exceed our target, our normal target of 5,300 acre feet. Looking at it, production slightly different way, this is how it comes out in terms of months, with each column representing a year with 2020 in sort of a turquoise blue. And again, this sort of reflects increased production from prior four, for May's, consistent with the other months of this year. Again, just a rebound that we're experiencing. Again, in a 12-month average, we're seeing production going up a fair bit here, but it will come down slightly, I think, as time goes on. Looking at our storage, total storage is reflected in our orange line. And we're about, as I said, 5% below average, and quite a distance away from 76, 77, thank goodness. Yeah. Our cumulative precipitation is not looking terrific, right? This is about 67% of average. But fortunately, our business really counts where, in terms of storage, as opposed to precipitation, and we're doing pretty good there. Our complaints for May, very low, I think, one or two. Really nothing remarkable about our, our May numbers for taste and odor. Reservoirs are actually looking really good in terms of taste and odor. Again, just a snapshot of where we are, about 83% of total storage, or 95% of normal for the date, similar to our partners to the north, Lake Sonoma, excuse me, is 92% of normal storage for this time of year. So at this point, we start projecting and looking out into our crystal ball into the future. Our black line represents actual storage. And then as we transition into the orange dash line, that is our projections for basically across summer. You can see there's no variations in that slope, really. And as, as we hit November 1st, that's roughly about the earliest of our rainy seasons. And we've, we've developed three projections here, and you've seen this for the last couple of months, I think, where the blue line represents 50% precipitation, and the purple line represents 150%. So we capture a fair range of potential outcomes for us. And the good news is that even in the 50% case, we remain above by next April, any voluntary rationing. And in sort of comments that I heard, we heard a couple months ago, or maybe a month ago, it might be interesting to look at these charts across more than one year. And this is an attempt to do that. Again, similarly as the previous chart, the black line representing actuals, and the orange line are transitioned through summer this year. And the first part of these curves you've looked at up to April of '21 on the previous slide. And we've extended this pattern of rainfall, 50% rainfall out for another, essentially, you know, this is over three rainy periods, right, where we're seeing this, this, this number. And interestingly, we are below, right, 25% rationing, but it's not, you know, as disastrous as we might think. One thing to bear in mind, as we look at this, the question came to my mind anyway, was how often does this actually happen? Where we get consecutive years of less than or equal to 50% of rain? And in our 144 years, that's never happened. While past performance is no, you know, guarantee of future, it's just an indicator and a data point for us. And the, the green line, as in the other chart, is, is just our average rain. And again, the purple being 150% of, of that. So projection-wise, that's what it looks like over two, and we have looked at this over a longer period of time. But I think this is a pretty good snapshot of range of possibilities. That, that's what our projections look like. Our supply strategy moving forward, as I say, you know, based on comments we had and conversations with staff, we did start increasing our take, our purchases from Sonoma County Water Agency on about May 22nd. And we, we are on track to exceed our normal allotment of 5,300 acre feet by July 1st. The slide here in front of us represents a couple of things. The gray bars here represent what we would do in a normal year. So if we had regular rainfall, this would be our typical pattern, and we would purchase about 5,300 acre feet across the 12 months from July to June. What we're, because we're in a dry year this year, we're looking at front-loading our water purchases. So we're effectively stacking up some of these grays earlier on. And you can see the numbers are, these are targets, are quite a bit higher than what we might normally do for this time of year. With the goal that by the time we reach December, January, we're in a position, if we need to or wish to, to continue taking additional water and purchasing additional water as it's available from Sonoma County. And so under this scenario, that's reflected in this sort of brick pattern that's on the blue here. So about the, towards the end of January, we'll hit our 5,300 acre feet, normal allotment. And by then, hopefully, it's either started raining or not, and we can decide to continue those purchases or not.
Well, hopefully, it has started to rain, but.
Right.
We'll certainly be informed. And I, I did want to reflect for a minute that I think the strategy that Paul has come up with, what we're gonna learn as we do it, and it may be, maybe, and we'll be talking to the board about it, a better approach even to do on a routine basis, once we make some system modifications that will make this a bit easier to operate in this mode. Because it really does provide us that back end of the year flexibility that we wouldn't really have otherwise were to turn out to be a rather dry year. So I think it's very thoughtful, this approach, and we'll be informed this year as to how we should go forward in the future, even if we aren't in a notably dry year.
I have a question.
Yep.
Oh, Paul, this is very good. And I just realized something that I hadn't noticed before, and that is if you look at the slide that has the projected reservoir storage going through the year.
The first one would just?
Yes, that one, yeah, yeah. You know, it would be interesting to see this slide with our allotment in there, because this gives a false sense of security, I think, relative to the water that we're having to bring down from Sonoma.
So this slide does reflect our allotment. It does not reflect, reflect, excuse me, the, over allotment.
Right. I guess what I'm thinking is, I think that for the most members of the public, looking at this, it's assumed that this is our reservoir storage.
I see.
You see what I'm saying?
Yeah, I see, yeah.
And so I don't, I don't have the solution, but if there's a way that you could look at this so that it shows that we are in fact at this level because we took in, you know, X acre feet from Sonoma, I think it's just important to see that, because again, for me, it creates a false sense of security, really. Because there is no alternative if we don't get the water from Sonoma, I guess is my point.
Right. Yeah, we can certainly do that.
Yeah, and I'm not saying how to do it, but if you could.
Yeah, we can take a look at how to do that.
Thank you.
Yeah, sure.
Very good.
Does that make sense to you guys?
So just last slide, very quickly, to summarize, we began front-loaded purchases of water May 22nd, on target to exceed our 5,300 acre feet for the year. And we'll have ongoing front-loaded purchases, starting again in July 1st, and continuing ongoing demand management throughout the summer and beyond. We're gonna continue, or continued in close monitoring of our demand and storage as we move along, and adjust those projections as best we can. Our weather outlook, as we, you know, hit the sort of predictable period of our weather, it's for the next 10 days, dry and warm, I think, a projection of 90 degrees for Thursday here in Cordermadera. And that concludes my presentation tonight.
Paul? Could I? Go ahead.
Sorry. So this year, we notified State Water Quality Board that this is a dry year, so we're releasing less water.
Yes.
Isn't that gonna, isn't that gonna kind of flatten the curve, not to use an expression that is?
Right. Um, the release water in, the difference in the release water is about 2 CFS across the summer. It's really not a huge amount of water. It, it is helpful, don't get me wrong, you know, made amount to 1,000 acre feet of water across the summer. But it's, it would be challenging to, for example, represent that on a, on this chart with a scale of 70,000.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
But yes.
Point taken, yeah.
Yeah.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, do we have any public comment on this matter?
There is no public comment.
Okay. That takes us, I guess, to Alex and Mike on item number six for our corp yard sewer lateral.
Good afternoon, or evening, should I say? So I'm here to present the administration building and corporation yard sewer lateral replacement project. Back in 2018, the town of Cordermadera notified the district of the upcoming road restoration and sewer main replacement project of Small Vista Boulevard. Per the town's private sewer lateral ordinance, the district was required to conduct an inspection and pressure test of both the administration and corporation buildings. They were allowed, and say, both tie into the sewer main on Temple Vista Boulevard. As a result of the inspection, it was determined that the sewer laterals would need to be replaced for both of the buildings. As a result, this project was designed and it was advertised on April 7th, and the bids were opened on April 23rd. The district received six bids with the lowest bid from Hardeman Construction, with a contract bid amount of $119,000. Hardeman Construction submitted the seven forms, as were identified in the instruction to bidders, that needed to be executed and submitted with their bid. However, in the instruction to bidders, it also requests for the bidders to submit the entire specification booklet with the bid. The remaining specification booklet was returned to the district via UPS on May 1st, since the district office was closed due to COVID-19. And at the time of the bidding, once the bidding was, was open, the district, the district's preliminary determination was that the bid from Hardeman Construction was non-responsive because they did not include the entire specification booklet. And on May 4th, the district received a bid protest from Hardeman Construction, challenging the district's preliminary determination that the bid was not responsive. District staff and legal counsel conducted further review of the bid submitted by Hardeman, and determined that the inconsequential irregularity should be waived, since the notice of inviting bids and section four of the instructions and information to bidders in our contract specifications both indicate that the district reserves the right to reject any and all bids, and to waive any irregularities in said bid. So as a result of all this, and all this being considered, the staff recommendation for the board is to approve resolution 8580, waiving that failure to return the copy of the entire specification booklet with its bid, and, and as an inconsequential bid irregularity, and authorizing the award of contract money to Hardeman Construction at their bid price of $119,000.
All right, the questions from the board?
Why do we require them to return the bid booklet with their bid?
That is something that I am currently working with our legal counsel to change in our specifications. So we do not require that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions from the board? Any comments from the public on this?
We have no public comments.
All right. Can I get a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, roll call both.
Director Bragman?
Aye.
Director Kohler?
Aye.
Director Quintero?
Aye.
Director Russell?
Aye.
President Gibson?
Aye.
Now we have a couple of vacancies to fill here. This is item number seven on the agenda. I, can I take them cumulatively, or should they be one at a time?
I think one at a time is probably best. President Gibson?
All right, thank you. I guess first is 7A, Natural Resource Program Manager.
I'll go ahead and take this one, Jack.
Okay.
This is a request to recruit for a Natural Resources Program Manager. As many of you know, Greg Andrew is retiring, and this is actually his last week here at the district. He's actually out right now at a discharge. There's a hit hydrant in Mill Valley, and he's out inspecting the creek on West Lighthill. And I can't stress enough how much, how important this position is to the district in terms of regulatory authorities and meeting our, our obligations to, to inspect creeks for pipe breaks which happen weekly, as well as compliance with our water rights order on Lagunitas Creek. So we're asking the board to approve filling this position. And we're, we're also, staff is proposing to change the title from Fisheries Program Manager to Natural Resource Program Manager, which is a position we already have here at the district. We now have two of them, and that'll allow us to sort of cast a broader net in terms of recruitment. We'll still be looking for somebody who specializes in aquatic ecology as we go through the recruitment process.
One question about the title change, Crystal. I, have you had any conversation with members of the public about this? My, I just, there are gonna be some people, I expect, who are gonna have some concerns about this, that it represents a downgrading of the focus on aquatic species.
We have talked generally with the public, but no specific meetings, especially in the COVID outbreak. But this position, it, it's important, not only because of the Lagunitas Creek support that it provides, but we also have a lot of wetlands and watershed projects within the watershed itself that require a specialist in terms of aquatic resources. So we're, we're certainly not gonna stray away from that necessity, and we will be looking for somebody with that specialty. And we will be modifying the job description to be sure that when we send out the advertisement, that it's clear that that's what we're looking for.
Okay. If you could run the job advertisement past the board, and I think past some of the regular members of the public, again, not that they will be making decisions, but I think it would be a courtesy to give them the opportunity to review and do some feedback before it goes final. And you know, people are, have been very involved with this issue for a long time and feel very passionately about it. So I want to be sure that they feel that they are being engaged in this process and that they're being heard.
It, it, that comment actually reflects a generalized complaint I've been hearing about the water district, that on our watershed activities, we are generally moving in our staff more to generalists and away from specialists. And it, it comes to us in a critical way. So at, at some point, we probably, probably at a watershed committee or something, want to address that issue, I think, in a general sense, you know.
So, I have a question. And so we have a contingency plan of sorts. If we don't, if we're unable to attract somebody with an aquatic background, that we will be then contracting for those services?
I, I think, yes, Director Quintero, that we are not going to compromise in the recruitment process, and staff does very much recognize the value, particularly as it gets closer and closer to Greg's retirement. Maybe I'm speaking for myself, but I do know Sean and Crystal are very focused on with a comparable candidate. If we need to extend the recruitment, we will, if we find the right person, and we would bring on contract help to maintain the operations and compliance and all the great work that Greg does.
Could also note that Greg was busy making sure that all of our monitoring contracts were in place prior to his departure. So we just completed that momentous task of getting everything in order before he walks out the door. And he's done an excellent job of transferring his knowledge to staff. We've been working for months to get documentation from him and to meet with him regularly to ensure that there's consistency upon his departure.
Yeah.
So under that agreement with the state, the WR 9517 that you mentioned in Greg's resolution, you know, I know they're interested in what we're doing in the watershed, so whoever the candidate is, is gonna have to, you know, comply, we're gonna, with all those specifications, so, you know, something we need to keep in mind as we go through this recruitment process. And we still will have Eric Etlinger. So we, we're still gonna have a specialist, so. But, you know, that's, we have a lot of obligations to, to, to the watershed that are need to be, are gonna have to be covered by this recruitment.
Okay, any other questions from the board on this? Any comments from the public?
There is no public comment.
Okay. Can I get a roll call vote, a motion, I guess, first on 7A?
I'd move approval.
Okay.
Second?
All right, got a motion in a second. Roll call vote?
Director Bragman?
Aye.
Director Kohler?
Aye.
Director Quintero?
Aye.
Director Russell?
Aye.
President Gibson?
Aye.
7A, Control Systems Administrator, 7AB, I should say, I'm sorry, 7B, Control Systems Administrator.
Yes, good evening. Paul Selye, Operations Director, again. The seeking approval to recruit and hire Control Systems Administrator position, we have an impending retirement in the operations division, and our Control Systems Specialist is retiring August 1st. This is a position that essentially takes technology that is constantly evolving, and allows it to be placed out in the system in the form of, you know, flow meters, pressure transducers, temperature sensors, level sensors. And the job of the Control Systems Administrator is to make those pieces of equipment interface with our SCADA system. All right? All right. Our control system software, we refer to as SCADA, allows us to essentially run the water system from Corder Madera. And technology is playing an ever-increasing role in, in, in water systems. And we need to make sure that we recruit and hire the right talent. We are changing the role from Control System Specialist a little bit in that we're adding supervisory duties to the position. And and, and the overall responsibility for this position, as I say, will be to ensure the interface of our SCADA system with all the components that are out in the system that allow us to move water from A to B and allow us to supply our customers reliably. It's a very important position for us. It's also a very challenging position to hire for, as you could imagine. These skills are in high demand. And we have reviewed our job description and salaries accordingly and presented them here tonight. So with that, I would take any questions at this point.
Questions from the board? Okay. None, any public comment?
There is no public comment.
All right. Can I get a motion for, to approve the motion 7B?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Director Bragman?
Aye.
Director Kohler?
Aye.
Director Quintero?
Aye.
Director Russell?
Aye.
President Gibson?
Aye. Future agenda items. Okay, so nothing out of the ordinary coming up. All of our calendar meetings will be held as noticed. I did want to note that we are, I might have mentioned this last meeting, but you will soon, in the next week or so, be notified of a couple of dates for a board retreat that we're going to be scheduling in September, of course, September, because we're confident that ever, all of this will be over and we'll be back in person. So, of course. Not being delusional, but I do believe, even if we do have to do it by Zoom, it is important to have an annual, once a year, get together and talk about key strategic issues for the organization over the coming year. So we'll be scheduling that. Okay. All right. With that, we will adjourn to closed session, I guess. Yes. And a reminder, I did send out an email. Because of the nature of this meeting, you'll leave this meeting and join the meeting. Jared, you were able to send out the email. I didn't check.
Yeah, I went, yes. Yes, I was. Everyone should have it. I think I sent it out around 7:20, 7:25 PM.
Okay. So we'll rejoin on that. Okay.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you all.